Okay, I'll call the order the March twenty nine, twenty twenty two capital outlay committee meeting. The time is five thirty nine. Let's please rise code pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which is where nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, I'm gonna take just a tiny bit out of order. Um, let's go to item number four, which is the approval of the meeting minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review? Anybody have any questions specifically on the January eighteenth meeting minutes?
No, no, good, thank you.
All entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes for January eighteenth of twenty twenty two. Motion by Miranda for the second. Second from Mary, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes. Extentions.
Okay, I'm an aye, sorry. License of.
License of.
Thank you.
The February first, twenty twenty two meeting minutes. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'm entertain a motion to approve the February first, twenty twenty two meeting minutes as submitted.
Motion to approve.
As a may, bud.
Oop, second.
Second from Mary. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those against? And and extensions? Less.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, so again, uh, so now let's go to three, which is, um, discussing it, discussion and rating of the departmental capital priorities. For your benefit, how we've, the the mindset that we have going into this is, our end goal is to make a recommendation to the finance committee in terms of special articles that are going to be submitted, um, what we think in terms of priority to the town. Okay, and so we started this process of collecting, um, capital outlay events, I'll call them, since some are actual fiscal pieces of the property, some are these feasibility studies, so, um, and, um, we're trying to put some semblance of order to them, but also for future years to be able to start saving up to pay for those future year expenses, right, the planning part of it. So, um, what you see up on the screen here is, um, the twenty twenty three, um, submissions, um, that we are considering, and we did go through and rate using a scoring sheet the last time we were here, and, so what you can see there is, let's see, the thirty five is the highest, right?
Yeah, that's the SCBA.
Right, right. So, um, what, uh, I guess some question, do we, when do we spend last year for special articles, do we know?
Can we look that up, just Google? It's gonna stop showing, just need to find the file. So what do we spend at the annual or at the annual on special combined?
Let's, let's, let's get both numbers.
Okay.
Special was like one point two, right?
The, what, yeah, what we spent at the special was one point two, but those also included um, deposits into stabilization and capital stabilization.
Okay.
And then, one second.
So then we would have been roughly eight hundred.
Come on, see if this.
I updated them, so.
Was this last?
This is that, that's from, um, yeah, that's from special town meeting.
Oh, so updated, okay. Oh, just special?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think there was a lot at annual.
No, there was the, there was the, the the engine, the fire engine, the bucket truck. Um, I just wanted to like see if I could go back and pull it up. Just bear with me if you don't mind.
Um, and and originally I'm asking Mike to pull this up because I want us to kind of have a target number, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
Um, ideally we come in under our target number. Um, may or may not be feasible, but, um, depending upon the needs of the town, but but it gives us something that we can kind of work towards.
And so this list, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that, nor did I get it electronically, I don't think. This is a list of what we're looking at for this upcoming town meeting.
Correct.
Do you mind if I? Thank you.
The ones that got the line, uh, future. The ones, the twenty twenty three, I don't have a line, but some of those.
Okay. And I can see that with those letters, but not clearly, so thank you. I will print this if I get a copy of it.
We should reschedule.
Okay, here's what we funded last uh, inner town meeting.
So seven hundred thousand roughly?
Yeah, the total amount requested, we funded out of that seven hundred thousand, we funded two seventy seven out of free cash. The other request came from other funding sources, mainly the, um,
C P C.
Yeah, there was a repurpose, so hundred, um, came from capital stabilization, twenty five from C P C, and we repurposed an article, a a prior year's article for the one eighteen.
Right. So we, reality is, is that we only really truly spent about five hundred and seventy thousand, over seventy five, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Backing up to street stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then.
So so we moved to roughly half of it was came from free cash.
Yeah, the two seventy seven.
Yeah, and then, and then we had a hundred thousand come from capital stabilization.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, what we saw was a net increase in capital stabilization of a hundred thousand then? Since we spent a hundred, since we moved two hundred into it.
Yes. Yes, and in November, yes.
Yeah. Um.
I think our balance in capital now is right around nine hundred thousandish.
Yeah.
Um, so right now in available free cash, we have four hundred and twenty five thousand, uh, from last October certification.
Yeah.
Uh, but just really to put in context as well, the F Y twenty three budget, um, to balance, it's, um, as proposed currently is relying on a hundred and twenty nine thousand of the, of the four twenty five.
Okay, so I think for this group, we should not necessarily worry about the free cash number. We'll let the finance committee worry about that, like they always do, because what they what they end up typically doing is saying, here's the list of all the capital expenditures that we want to make in this year, and they'll do a good job of saying, we should hold off till special for this one. Okay, so we'll let them deal with that aspect of it. What I think we need to do is just look at from the F Y twenty three, what we deem to be the most important, now the ones we didn't rate, those are the ones that are, um, have either been withdrawn, correct? Or.
Yeah, those haven't been the top F Y twenty three playoffs.
Right, or the or the top priorities, well, you know, like the school ones are not those, well, they are schools, I guess, parks and rec ones, right?
Yeah, yes.
Those, those are not not the top priority for them.
Yes.
Okay, so if we, if we, if we then filter out this, the ones that aren't scored, so, you know, and just uncheck the blanks.
Oh, thank you. Good morning.
And then that should be good.
Perfect.
So that, now that's what we're kind of left with.
Yep, and now just pour the heck of it. Do you know, always judges my Excel capabilities.
Never.
Well, I I I mean, that's, that's where you kind of just push the keyboard a little bit to your right there, like.
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
I always stole it.
How is that? Oh, that's why, how is that in?
Be be careful.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah, okay, the three and the three, okay. Oh, that's off though. Yeah, oh, I'm gonna bring Mr. Brennan to place.
What, you think it's off?
Three plus three is six twenty five. There's no way that all is up to one point nine like it did.
My goodness, just keep. Well, it might be picking up the hidden dollars.
Oh, true.
Sorry, it's a little blurring curve, I can't make fun of you anymore.
Thank God.
I guess.
Okay, that's better.
So one point two basically? Okay. So then I guess the first question is, is can the
Where?
ambulance fund?
Just really quick, I thought I just all heard it had something in it, right? The D R feasibility study should be on there.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, the D R definitely should.
Did we not score it though?
We did.
We did score it, yeah.
It did. Yeah, we did.
It's thirty two.
Oh my god, how do I go back to undo the filters, you know?
Just.
Just go right there. And click links.
Okay.
And it'll show up.
Wait, does it say delete? No, oh, thirty, yeah, see?
Thirty two.
It's rated. Okay, one second, now I'm gonna, oh.
It's there.
You might have been a little bit scrolling down.
Oh, down, it was a scrolling thing, okay.
So that, so then that number, the one point one eight five is not correct.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, 'cause my keyboard's starting with the.
Oh, the three, yep, that's exactly why, yep.
Okay, that's better. So so that's one point two million.
Want to fix the.
Yeah, we can, we can keep going, I'll just.
So so.
No, it's not a game, you're hot in that, yeah.
So, but the plan is to fund that from E and D, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So we can probably exclude that one, Janelle, I know you just selected it.
That's okay.
Um, and then, the, um, can the ambulance fund sustain the three hundred and twenty five thousand?
Yes. Yes, we've level set it, so it's able to
Okay.
do both.
So we can exclude that as well.
Do you know what cell that is?
Uh.
D five? D five? Um.
Right there.
No, that's fifteen.
Oh, I can't see that phone.
Oh, it wasn't.
One second.
Uh, but it's D fifteen, that's why?
Yeah.
It's gets cut off on the screen? Okay.
I'm just enjoying the.
Okay.
I know.
So it's, so it's million dollars basically is what we we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so again.
So so does it grab that information too? Just, it's helpful. So that's a message from the five, she forgot in the S C B A's.
Okay, well, and and again, that's, it's, it's, it's not necessarily about the funding, it's about the planning to
Yeah. Play on that.
in 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 the fact of the matter is, is that that equipment
Mm-hmm.
is out of date.
Yep.
And it poses a risk to our personnel.
Got it.
Um, so, so it's not, it's not so, again, that, if if we do it at annual or we do it at special, it's again, it's, that's, that's kind of immaterial, what we need to do is plan for the fact that
Yeah.
there's three hundred thousand dollars there that is, well, it's a significant chunk of change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it's half of what we spent last year in terms of capital, right?
Yes. Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So, but but it's something that needs to be done. So, so when you, when you look at that, right, so if we now take, if if we're looking to go to s- to the six hundred thousand, you know, I think the the S C B A's gotta be at the top of the list, now we may push it off to special, but that's again, kind of immaterial right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so is there, we we can be making motions all night tonight if we wanna be super formal, but I think at the end of the day, what we really wanna do is just start putting a a position number in here, a priority number.
Mm-hmm.
That says, in in I'm thinking at this point, would everyone concur that S C B A's is a
Mm-hmm.
is it is the one?
One fifty.
Yeah, so is there?
I could hopefully have a, I don't think.
So how about, so how about within the score, because those scores aren't linked, we do a parentheses and then the order. So if we have the score, yeah, it's like, yeah, like that.
Okay, yeah.
And that works for everybody?
Yeah, that's, that's good for now.
Okay.
Figure this all out, right? Um, and then we've got a number of thirty twos there, right? So we have a feasibility study at the school, which we already said, we don't need to worry about. So that's, that I think gets the two, and I think it gets a two regardless, because of what the townspeople have voiced with the fact that we're already in modulars at the elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I saw some numbers, I think it was in the school presentation at the finance committee meeting on Thursday, that shows that the middle school is gonna have an increase in students of roughly fifty to sixty kids, I believe, is what I saw? Something like.
I can't be sure.
Maybe you probably pulled up the file from there. Um.
They're close to capacity too.
Right, right, so.
That numbers let on.
So that's why the feasibility study is really, really important. And and at the end of the day as well, it's, there's no impact to our budget since it's coming from the E and D. Okay? Um, and then we talk about the fire station and the library. You know, again, those numbers, were those numbers individual numbers, or were those numbers, um, the the total of those two numbers, the quote unquote discounted rate from the professional services company?
So those would be, so those both represent individual numbers for the same project. So what it would cost to go up to bid for both of those separately? So we wanted to have a conservative, um, support there. So then if we did put them up, we would realize savings from there. So but those, so it would cost a hundred and fifty thousand for a fire station feasibility study and another one forty, um, for a library feasibility study.
So if they were separate, we'd end up separately, but if we do them combined, we can expect to spend a little bit less.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we can, but it's hard to say at this point, until we do that, yep.
And work how much, how much of less it would be, right? Okay. Um, and then, and then we also have the dump truck, which also rated out at a thirty scale.
Mm-hmm.
The guardrails below, there, the third, on thirty four.
Yeah.
Oh, is there, oh, there is a thirty four out there? Oh, yeah, the guardrail? Um, well, we're gonna stand up here. So, so the, the thing that we have to think about balancing too is, you know, so we we have, you know, high ticket item.
Mm-hmm.
You know, fairly high ticket item for for feasibility study, um, for the fire station, and again, same thing for the library. At the end of the day though, you start thinking about
Mm-hmm.
this, this line item here, five thousand dollars for seal coating the police station and and relining it. That's short money. Same thing, um, you know, with our patrol vehicle at sixty four thousand. That's relatively short money, and it's something that we we've done annually, right? Um, same thing with the guardrail. Um, so, you know, so the question that we, or or what we have to think about balancing is, do we get a lot of things done with that that are, you know, what's that right balance? Do we get a lot of things done, do we get just a couple of things done, or do we fall somewhere in between? I'm looking at, because because the smaller things gives us more impact throughout the town, I'm more inclined to be in that medium to large number of things that we can handle. Um, but then, at some point, you gotta handle the big ticket items.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, between the S C B A's and then the two feasibility studies, you're already looking at six hundred thousand dollars roughly, which is all of what we spent last year in terms of a capital budget.
So are you gonna stick to that, six hundred thousand?
I'm not gonna stick to it, no, no, that's a guideline, that's a guideline, it's just, it's just, it's our point of reference, right? We have to be, we realize that when we go to town meeting, and our recommendation is, we want to spend a million dollars, we need to go back and say, you know, last year we spent six hundred thousand, this year we're proposing a million dollars, here's why. Okay? Um, and.
Now we realize, oh, I mean, these things we really need, yeah.
Right, well, in in, but but I think what we we're, we're kind of, uh, um, falling prey to our own goodness. I mean, you look at what Tommy Ferry has done as as the the highway department superintendent there, and the fact that he's made his fleet last for as long as it has, okay? Because he's had some very skilled people in that department who have been able to maintain and repair those vehicles forever and ever, well, we've lost a few of those people due to retirement.
Yeah.
Um, and we don't have necessarily that same level of expertise that we had a few years ago, plus the fact that he's got thirty and forty year old pieces of equipment that that he's, you know,
Okay.
patchwork, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, does, is the savings that we get back from not having to repair those things justify the cost of us buying new ones, and in the long run, the answer is gonna be yes. But will the townspeople see that? And that's, that's the point that we we're gonna need to make.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and these are some of the things that I fear. Aren't they supposed to have a committee report submitted by like the end of this month or something?
The capital outlay?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I don't think that's happening by tomorrow.
I was gonna say Thursday.
Or, yeah, the end of this month. By Thursday, I don't think.
Yeah, we can give you some latitude.
It is. Um, but these are, these are the kinds of things that I wanna address in that report. The fact that we have been very frugal over the years. Um, and I know our, you know, people say that our our tax rate is is high.
Yeah.
But it it would be even higher if our department heads weren't really managing the way they spent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we can't, the other, the other piece is that we don't, even though we have capital stabilization.
Yeah.
We don't have a good way to fund it, and we don't have, um, we're not really increasing it in a significant fashion
Okay, so why?
for a rainy day.
And what are we saving it for?
Well, it it's intended to be for that rainy day, so so for example, if the ladder truck went today, let's say it got in a horrendous car accident, right?
Yeah.
To buy a brand new one right now is somewhere in the, the vicinity of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars.
And you don't wanna use the regular stabilization.
Well, you're gonna use, you're gonna use those either regular stabilization or capital stabilization, regardless, you you get a dip into one of those or both, right? Um, and and the the grand total of both of those is about?
Two or two point five?
About two.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so if you, if you proportionally take out a million dollars out of those, then you're taking what, six hundred and fifty thousand out of regular stabilization and three hundred and fifty out of out of the, um, capital stabilization. But you got, you know, you have a million five altogether. Um, and there's this, what we're, yeah, I, my my biggest fear is we're never gonna be able to refund, re- re dash fund, not refund, but refund those two accounts in the event of an emergency, because we don't have a way a a process to fund those accounts with any sort of regularity. We've always depended upon free cash to to fund those, right? Always. And we need to come up with a better way, or and and it doesn't have to be a hundred percent of how we fund it either, we can, we can still put some dependence on free cash. But but what is that dependency level?
Mm-hmm.
Is it twenty five percent free cash and seventy five percent from some other funding source? I don't know. I don't, I don't have the answers, it's, it's.
So I can with that, we also have, we also have a two and, so newer revenue streams that we have the ability longer term to dedicate to something like this in terms of marijuana way, terms of marijuana revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And also in terms of the pilot revenue from the solar arrays as well, that we could, sort of, with a town meeting, one technical, so, so like, and we brought this up such a while, like financial management review with D O R. Um, so like, we have a dedicated way to do that. Also, if we go forward and, so we're still at the infancy of this process, but having also a, like, so like a financial policy, uh, that so so really specifies, so like with our free cash, whether it's five hundred thousand or one point five million, that all of that total free cash that, like a percentage would automatically be dedicated. So, so like two, so two capital, so two capital stabilization, two overhead, and those type of things that will allow us to get in a more predictable, right, faction to longer term, but we're not there yet.
Correct, correct. So, I I mean, if we're going strictly off scoring, the the thirty four, the forty three thousand for the um, uh, guardrail there is is actually the, should be the two, right?
Mm-hmm.
But we have the power to override the the number, so. Um, I I I think. I think what you will find is that what people will support the feasibility study for the school again, but it does again, that's not coming out, that's coming out of the E and D. Yeah, it's coming out of the E and D. So so I think we made the guardrail, the three then. Pretty good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now let's deal with the thirty two since we have a a number of them. Do you have any more filter just on the thirty?
Yeah.
The the twos, I guess.
Let's take that as well.
I know.
Uh, no, no, we don't need that one. That's the school one. You need the one above that one.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. There. Okay. So that's what we're looking at. They're all three small ones. So you got dump truck on the guardrails. Is that what you wanted to do? Yeah, the guardrails came in at a thirty four, so we gave that the we signed that a value of thirty, a third priority. So so that one's already in there and we're we're now from from here, we're looking at the at what should be in the fours. Okay. Or the or the highest of these ones, I should say. Because we may go ahead and bump some of those smaller projects up in 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 place here. Anybody have an opinion?
I don't. It's not an opinion. It's just when Tom came and spoke to us, I think he indicated that the dump truck was very important and that the equipment they have now is like falling apart quickly. So I think that might be important, not that the other two aren't, but
Right.
that might be more immediately.
I mean, all all three of them have their their unique qualifiers, right? So so, you know, the dump truck falling apart needs to be replaced, right? The fire station, you know, the fact that the secretary's office is being used as a um sleeping quarter at night, you know, the um the the library, the fact that we might lose our accreditation if we don't find a better solution. That kind of but I think, you know, Mike, again, based upon what you had indicated, does that make the feasibility study for the library a little less important or more important?
We we're we're still gonna have, so regardless of how we move forward with our options on the library, we're still going to need so like we will be trying to um so so there are a lot of possibility of being considered so currently leaving, um so like putting into question the need so currently for the feasibility study. However, based on the time we hit town meeting or really setting the one, we're gonna know how we're going how we're going forward and if the funding for a feasibility study will be needed. So so but if there's if there's if there's funding not needed for a feasibility study, there will be funding needed for all sort of capital costs. We also have the ability to leverage to leverage our after funding um in the in a local share of our after funding, the money that comes directly to the town, uh which based on the on the federal government's revenue uh revenue replacement rules, uh basically takes all the restrictions off of that funding. So ideally, we would use that so that funding, if we have the ability to try to address our library a library issue. But we so but we'd still have a capital cost that we'd have to uh we'd have to refund in order to oh, you know, move down a process to get that up. So to get uh the library operational. So that's why I do the paper. Um, if I had, so like we're exploring all so options that to deal with this. We also so yeah, like I don't wanna get into it, but we're uh we're exploring all potential funding sources, but leaving that, oh, you know, my preference would be to leave that funding intact as we move through the process, so we can be able to address what we'll hopefully have the ability uh either way through a feasibility study or otherwise the library issues at this point.
I have a question. So when you talk about the capital funding for the library, you're trying to fill the existing building? Or not necessarily? Or we can't talk about it?
You can't talk about it.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, that's one thing we try to avoid here is like what are all the different options and everything for for across the board for everything like like even like the the dump truck and the fact that Tom's gonna need for two or three on this list now, it's like
Okay.
we want to just
Yeah.
one at a time and historically, you know, what what is he replacing kind of thing is is what we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yes.
I just look at it and I think, you know, from a towns person, a townspeople perspective, we have a lot of feasibility studies on there. I don't know how often we have this many feasibility studies, but a feasibility study is sort of, you know, you can't wrap your arms around it and say, okay, I just drove down the street and I see where my money is being funded. So including some of those things in here makes sense to me.
Yeah, so so.
Of course, I'm one of the feasibility studies, so don't mind mine, don't mind mine.
Ten 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 like ten like you have the numbers the best compared to who made them. When back in two thousand, what was the population? Was it sixteen?
Six sixty two hundred? Well, we split into two reasons, so we hit sixty two hundred, so I don't know what that was. I was still there. I mean, when I started ninety four, I think it was fifty six hundred.
Okay.
So.
So so roughly that I think it was like, cause that's when I moved into town, it was two thousand. I think I think it was like sixty two, maybe it was sixty.
Why do I have to sense this? So that four hundred.
So so somewhere around there. Now now we're at eighty.
Eighty one one.
Eighty one hundred, okay? So we've had basically twenty five percent growth in uh over your own twenty years, right? That fire station is the same station as when I moved here. Okay, we we haven't grown that fire station at all, right? That library is the same library.
Absolutely.
Okay, and and I I've only been here since two thousand, okay? So I and I couldn't tell you how long the book the the library's been there for.
Year two oh five, I think.
Right, when I was in the building. So 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 needless to say, these are these are things that need to be addressed that haven't been addressed for quite some time and what is the reason for it? It's growth. It's the growth and and so.
And as you stated, if people have been taking good care of their budgets and
Right.
you know, being fiscally responsible or trying to
Right.
and then it gets to critical mass.
Mm-hmm. Well, and it it's critical mass, there's changes in the law, right?
Yeah.
So the library, the fact that it's you know, we would have to put an elevator in and all of that, you know, that's you know, that that's that's kind of prohibitive in a in a building like that. So those are all things that, but that's what the feasibility study is there for you, right?
Yeah.
So.
And I guess that, you know, as you stated, these things will have to be articulated at town meeting.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Justification for it.
Yeah, and and really, that's that's something else that we need to champion with the um department heads who are submitting these is you need to be at town meeting, you need to be able to
Yes.
to to be prepared to talk to your warrant article to
Yes.
to fill the townspeople in
Right.
on the state of your equipment, basically, or building or whatever the case may be and why it's needed. So a- as I see this here, um my suggestion is of these thirty twos, I I just think we all give them the same number. We all give them.
It's so important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, now what I will say is, um, Janelle, if you if you can clear the thirty twos, then just give us back that everything. The the question now becomes, but not the points, but not the points. I think I'm loo- I'm looking at this and I think the ask for the I think the ask for the the roll-off containers, I think the ask for the the um the last two, the the police vehicle and the um the seal coating and line painting. And I look at at the parks and rat and the fact that they came in here very prepared and with a laundry list of I guess, um, I'll call I'll call it um town owned properties that they want to fix up and the fact that they prioritize this one tells me that they have a plan. And that they're working towards, they're not they're not trying to, you know, throw throw money at everything all at once. They're they're being very thoughtful. And and again, it comes back to that, you know, what's what you're paying for the buck too. So I mean, if you if you ask me, I'm I'm gonna plug, I'm gonna plug the seal coating up to up to the the number four spot. Cause it's short money and it's got still a high value, which one point behind the thirty twos we just talked about.
Yeah, it prevents a more expensive cost down the road, it's
Right. Anybody disagree with making the seal claim with
No, no.
The four?
And that's at the police station?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, that's new building, you know, relatively new.
Right.
And if we let maintenance go at other places and the ticket price goes up, then you know, as far as looking at justification or rationale for it.
Right.
Not an easy job.
No.
No, no, no.
But
Because we know we all need attention.
Right, right. And the the thing about a feasibility study is that it is a one and done.
And then people end up saying, and what's the next step? How much is that gonna cost us?
But well.
That's what's hard about, yeah, no, you're right. That's what's hard about.
Yeah. But but the without s- without taking
Without they don't make any movement.
without taking the next step, guess what? The those those firefighters and E M Ts that are staffing our firehouse, they're gonna go to the next town over.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, um, so you know, you know, the seal adage, you gotta you gotta give something to get something, right?
Right. Right.
Um, so. I mean, at the at the end of the day, we're asking for a million dollars and we've been asking for six hundred thousand. I think a few years back, we asked for eight, right? One point.
So but the million dollars are combined with the fact that there are some things on here. So so like the S C B A's also as well, that there's a potential that there may also exist in to an outside funding source.
And I I understand that, but but I I'm I'm of the opinion that we don't count on it.
Oh, no, no, and I'm not arguing, but yeah, like the number represents a real number, but there's still that potential.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, yeah, if we if we got
So just hypothetically speaking, based on or you know, I mean, we so might in exploration, just as a hypothetical, through the county share of after funding to address the public health need. So 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 uh so like S so like S C B A packs and apparatus might be so after eligible. So based on what S C B A's do, so like we could also so explore that through the county as well.
So I I mean, I think that's, i- if you clear that one item, then the ask for seven hundred thousand dollars is is nominal, right? Then we don't have to go through this exercise of figuring out what what should be first, second, third. We'll let the finance committee say, you know, let's let's hold off on the patrol vehicle till the special or whatever, which typically what we do with that patrol vehicle, cause we know we're gonna spend it anyways, but it just gives us a better um idea of a firm, that firm number, cause at that point, the free cash has all been certified. So um we're not working out the sum best guess number based upon pretty accurate number though because of our in town account, but um in in town attorney, but but still, it's it's.
So when do you, when would you know about that?
Well, whether it's eligible, we were putting out an application through the county portal. So and that's just an internal thing we would do to um
At any time?
Yeah, to ascertain the el- the eligibility, so we can do that really now.
Okay. So I think, I mean, I think we go to the finance committee with these over many number of items and it's twelve? I don't know, cause I need to know.
But do we just want a full waiting? So not full waiting, sorry, that sounded awful.
Priorizations?
Yeah, so just so it's clear.
Yeah, we can do that.
Still really poor. And all the thirty twos, are they gonna be fives? All the remaining thirty twos, I'm sorry.
I still like I would I would put the roll-off containers as the five. Small money, big bang for your buck. We've been repairing these things for a while. They are worn, they're past their useful life. It should be replaced, it should have been replaced years ago. Anybody okay with that? All right, now we go.
Put these at six.
Yeah, we'll put the rest of the thirty twos at a six.
Are we skipping the ambulance because it's
Um, no, we could we we put the school feasibility study as a two, even though it's coming out of E and D, so we should still give it a prioritization. But I think um at this point, it's um that got a twenty six and the the looks like the patrol car is next at a twenty nine. And and the one ton dump truck is at a twenty nine as well, and they're both basically the same money. So I think those would you both go next at the same number, right? So the question is, do we put seven stacks to that or do we count the three sixes as six, seven and the eight, and so we start with nine for the next seven numbers? You know. You know. It's all about the ties, right?
Yeah.
I I honestly, I think you go with a nine, because if 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 we have to go back and reprioritize these
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
and put a definitive number, then then we give ourselves the space without having to renumber everything.
So we're gonna give them a nine.
Yeah. And then that would then make I think um I would just give Parks and Rec a the the eleven spot then, because that makes because we have a funding source to be ambulance. You agree with that logic or my crooked logic?
So I'm sorry, I missed one thing, we have the seven eights, I'm sorry, that's broken down.
There is no seven and eight, there's three sixes.
Okay, so.
So so if you if we get forced into
Yeah. Yep.
having unique numbers, we have space to put them in without having to change everything else that follows.
I I liked the one. Okay.
So, alright, um. Any more discussion on this? No, we'll get a copy of this, then all the the changes that we paid.
Okay.
Do you mind? Yeah, so if there's no discussion on this, I will entertain a motion to accept our prioritization of the scored items um that have been submitted by our department head. Motion to accept. Motion made by Brenda, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Very with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, all those opposed, abstentions, ice habit, okay?
So I just have one other question, do we wanna do anything with the remaining funding sources?
Um.
Just leave them at the potential free cash or the private?
So so I might indicate for that SCBA that we're trying to pursue ARBA for that.
And is this linked?
Yes. No, 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 just through the dropdown.
Oh. I thought it was linked to the um
I see something.
The actual page.
So try and give all the buzzles, let's see.
Oh, that's good, are you?
Trying, okay, yeah. Oh, are you doing one on one?
Oh, jeez, this is what I get, this is what I get.
Free cash.
Alright, so we're looking at here, right?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, how do we go?
There is a free cash at this point.
Um, I believe so, although yeah, it'd be a mix between free cash and capital stabilization.
True, true, yeah, everything.
That's, I think.
It's gonna leave that.
I I Yeah, we we might wanna build that in as one of our possible dropdown choices, so that
Yeah.
because then we'll leave it up to the finance committee to decide.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm okay, I'll do that.
How to.
So and I'll put that option for the remaining lengths, if that's agreeable?
Uh, yeah, I think that. Anyone else have a? Any objections to that? No, okay.
Okay.
Alright.
And.
Like you could you could even make the argument, like the the seal coating and line painting
Mm-hmm.
that come make that come, cause it's a maintenance item, you make the objection take that with regular stabilization, right? You could.
Yeah, but that's.
I get it, maybe six of one half dozen would be half, that's really what it was, but you know, I kind I kind of like to think of the capital stabilization on this as far as. But but we only have nine hundred thousand and we're gonna spend a million, so.
Yeah, probably a little short.
So so one of the updates I've
I checked my account when I was sixteen.
So one of the updates I provided to the FinCom doesn't it now, uh that Janelle up early, well, um um was the fact that one of the things that I have really taken hold so far, so without departments, I believe, is the fact that I've got departments. Um so to really understand the process that we're going through here, so I think there's been sort of restraint already uh by departments from um or you know, from really submitting, uh you know, a couple of warrant articles until they know. So it we're really where we're gonna end up with tonight? So like, would it be okay as a result of, as a result as a result of tonight? So so to make sure the project listed here, so there are accompanying warrant articles from the applicable departments, so even though they might not get funded to special hypothetically, so like at least we're, so we're ensuring we can have a conversation so about them as we go forward in the warrant process.
Yeah, when when are the warrant articles due?
April thirteenth.
April fifteenth?
Thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
Thirteenth, um yeah, I mean, I think it I think it makes sense um to go ahead and and let these department heads know that these are the ones that we are and and that's actually, so we should take a step back.
Mm-hmm.
Uh we we just had a motion to accept our prioritization. What I now need is a motion to um recommend to the finance committee these requests from the department heads for FY twenty three. Right? Cause that's that's our role, is to recommend to the finance committee.
Mm-hmm.
So from those, a motion, and a second, or Mary? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, ice habit? Okay, so so given that this committee, you can let those department know, let us know, this committee is recommending these requests
Mm-hmm.
to the FinCom to be uh held under consideration for recommending at the annual and or special town meeting. Especially the or, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay. Alright. Anything else on this?
I don't. I couldn't connect the name.
Yeah, it's the uh related committee discussions, okay. Is there any, so I think related committee discussion, do we have any other open discussion items, like?
Uh no, no, I just use uh the catchall sources and anything else, but I don't have any, no, it's.
Yeah, yeah. I'll have anyone. Anybody else have any? Alright, great, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
It was made by Brenda, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting adjourned, six thirty.
So.
So everybody doesn't have a list?
You know, I want to take, I want to take a couple months off, I can maybe come back in the fall. You know? I don't know.